Okay, so at 6:30, I'd like to call the meeting in order, verify compliance with open meetings law and adapt the agenda. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under our government, indivisible, infinite, and ever new.
Thank you. Okay, so item three is consent agenda. Consent agenda items are approved all at once and are one meeting approval of items. Three A is approval of personal recommendations. Would anyone like to remove the item? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item three A?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So item four is discussion and action items. Four A is a first reading of the Neola Policy Manual. Any -- so we have some discussion left over from last week. Who wants to start that?
I can start what I sent out in the email and then any other things that board members have because we did identify the four policies that were identified by the policy committee to bring forward for discussion. I tried to summarize with that, and we do have some discussion on those. So let's start from there and then if anybody else has any follow-up with anything else. So my understanding is that the public participation at board meetings, which was policy 167.3, will be further discussion. That's how at least my -- that we have to have some conversation about what that looks like moving forward. And because that it was sort of linked in with our formats of meetings, how we're having either committee of whole, business meeting, regular meeting, that those two things are linked because to decide what that public participation looks like without knowing the format is sort of hard. So that we decided we needed to move that as we said, I don't know if we said September or whatever, we didn't put a specific date, but that goes on something that has to be decided in terms of what that looks like. And so we recognize that it's not perfect right now, both in the way that we're carrying out nor how the current policy is and all of that. So I guess that was the first policy that I put on there, at least what my recollection was after reviewing what we stated last time, so.
Yeah, and so the notes you made, three minutes and then required to sign up, but not necessarily prior to the meeting. And then, as we said, after the policies are approved, we'll go back and review the regular board meeting versus committee of whole meeting structure going forward. Does anyone have any questions about that?
I just want to express how strongly I disagree with three minutes. Our community is used to coming here in five minutes. And actually, Eileen spoke within the five-minute timeframe. So if they come to this meeting and they have been used to coming to boards, and we've got a referendum coming up, so I hope people come, they're used to five minutes. And I would really like to hope that you would reconsider that and go back to the five minutes. It still gives you the board president because ninety percent of our meetings, it's just not a problem. But if someone wants to come, I really feel strong that five minutes is what's a pretty good timeframe to make your points as opposed to just three. And I didn't think Eileen said anything in there that was kind of useless. I mean, not that that's the only example we've had, but I'd really like to strongly recommend that we think about just reversing that again and going to five minutes.
Okay.
And you can always cut that back if there's a large crowd. And the reason that I'm going there --
Well, I don't think you can cut that back.
Yeah.
The reason that I'm going there is because I really want to see us encourage public participation. And five minutes has not in the past been a problem for us that I can see. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I've never seen that be a problem for us. We have had, in my four years on this board, we have had very little large issues. Obviously, when you have a referendum coming forward, that's going to create that. And some of the changes with our committees, we've had only a couple that have really required us to have maybe a large audience participation. In that case, again, I'm making my point, if that happens, you can always back it down to the three minutes.
Go ahead.
I would say the exact opposite in the sense that there's a bunch of people coming here that say they want to talk, and they get in the audience and John has to tell them, everybody, although it says five minutes, I'm going to have to limit everybody to two or three. That's going to make people quite irate.
That's true.
Whereas the exact opposite, when you only have three minutes, but we don't have anybody else participating, you can go longer if that's a hot-button issue or something like that. I'd rather us give more time than take it away where it says you already have that amount of time.
That's a good point. What about the people over there used to having the five minutes? And they come here and now they're told they can only do three minutes.
So how often do we have people come?
Let me -- I mean, answer my question before you ask another one. What does it -- the other side, the flip side of that is just people are used to coming with five minutes. What -- let me finish, but what's the -- I'm not saying it right.
You do, you are saying you're right.
The question is what's impact on the public? No, I hadn't finished yet. What's the impact on the public when they come here and now they can't speak for --
Nobody's saying you can't speak. There's the leeway to have more time given, but it's the perception of allowing someone to speak more -- for more time versus taking away time that they ordinarily thought they'd have. I'd rather have someone come here with the expectation of three and get five than the expectation of five and get three.
How are you going to communicate that to the public?
It's in the policy, just the same. You said Jonathan has it right, or in the way you wanted it, to cut the time down from five to three or vice versa. It says right in there that you can give them more time or cut them off necessarily, whatever it is.
So could we create then -- I guess there's ups and downs to either way. Can we -- public participation is very important to me. Could we create then a thing? Some boards have little brochures for when they walk in in the back, just these are the rules for hours, especially since we're changing them up a little from what people are used to. So when they walk in, they can get a little, like, guidelines for how they can participate at meetings. Maybe that would put my mind at ease and then support this policy.
How often do people come and talk about that?
They don't. But you're changing it from five to three for --
It is on the agenda.
Who would know that?
What you just asked for is on the agenda.
The rules for it are on the agenda. So we're already giving them a plan.
The agenda is posted. So if they did want to come, they would have to look at the agenda, they would naturally go to the agenda if they could even find it or, you know, they would be odds on the agenda. I think that --
What's on the agenda? I'm sorry, tell me on the agenda.
How you can participate or how you cannot participate, how long you can participate.
Okay.
When it says college and college.
I don't think you can give five minutes and cut them at three. That I'm not for. I say you can start at three and go more. And in the last case, when Eileen was here, I don't think, and we shouldn't say Jonathan, but the president, because it can change, whoever the president is, I would think would have the common sense to realize that if ain't nobody else here, if she's on point, let that individual go. I don't think that's the point. It's --
It goes back to your point you made last time, is we're looking in the future in worst-case scenario, or if there's all kinds of people here, we have to be able to control it somehow. And the best way to do that is to put the rules in effect prior, not go and change them. It does give the president leeway to allow for additional.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion also? I also, you know, I want to make sure that our public does know how to communicate. And I think Stephanie actually had shared a neighboring district on their website, that on their website, they have a way specifically that says how you can communicate to the board. And so, and it wasn't through board policy, it was just on their website. You can email the board members, you can come to a public meeting, you can -- so I think it was, you know, it was trying to encourage, you know, if they're wondering so they're not searching, because if we've had people say, "I don't know how," then we can address it. And that's a different issue necessarily than just board policy. That's just us communicating better to the residents and public. When our newsletter goes out, if the residents want to know, "How can I?" You know, if they're confused about how to communicate, they didn't know they could email or where to find email addresses or any, or however they choose to do that, then that's on us to just provide them a better thing. It doesn't, I mean, that's to try to be, to encourage us so it doesn't look like we're trying to hide it. So I think from that standpoint, if we're feeling like people aren't sure on how to do it, you know, putting something here once they get here is too late. They need to know before they even get here, "How can I communicate with a board member?" So that would be something in our new website case event when we redo the board pages. How can you, as a, you know, resident, citizen, concerned person, communicate with the board and then make it a little bit more friendly again?
I had made a suggestion, I think in the last regime, to print our agenda on the website. I mean, to put it out, not, you know, go three clicks and find it, to put it on the news, "Here it is." Every one we have is right there, so.
Well, another option --
It may get more people, it may not, I don't know.
Another option that Logan and I had talked about, first of all, is now that we have the weekly connect, just putting a little blurb Monday as a board meeting, click here for the agenda.
Yep.
Just to let, I mean, again, that doesn't go out to residents, but it does go out to parents. It's better than what we're doing now. And even doing a board, some districts do what's called a board recap. It's not the official minutes because you can't approve those till the next time. It's just highlights to say what actually happened, especially the staff, because sometimes staff want to know what got approved or did not get approved the night before. So Logan and I have talked about those two things. Again, it doesn't go out to all residents. We couldn't put out approved minutes until they're approved, but it's just some highlights. Sometimes there are some things that the board takes action of approval of proposals and that, that staff members are, you know, that, and that we can't unapprove those, so those are written. So that would at least increase the visibility of the posting of the agenda and the activity of the board a little bit more than it's happening now, which I think, Quinn, is what you're saying, is they have to go and dig and find and whatever.
That sounds great. I just had one more question on this policy. Did we change B? Did we address the concern of people can address the board on any issue during the public forum? And I think under B, we were going to change that. Anyone having a legitimate interest may participate during the public portion. It didn't have to be on specific to the agenda.
No, we said we were going to discuss that further when we discuss committee of the whole versus --
Okay, so for now, though, could we take that out? Because otherwise, people can't address us on any, ever, on anything other than what's on the agenda.
Yeah, and that's what we currently practice.
Yeah, and I'm against it. I thought long and hard about this. And why are we allowing someone to come in and bring up ID, bring up talk when we can't address them, when we can't, as a body, can't even talk outside the agenda?
Because that's the way it is in an elective official body. I mean, that's been my experience on boards I've worked with. It's unusual to not allow the public to address the board somewhere at some time, within limits, the limits of, and with respect and with, you know, dignity.
Yeah, but I go back to a person --
I've never seen him say he can address it.
Advisory committee.
We even had that before it got changed somehow. We had that with --
Well, not somehow. And I don't know if you saw the email I sent today. It was actually done in 2014. I think, I believe you copied on the email.
Yeah, but that's a different --
Well, that's when this change was made. And it's outlined in the minutes.
So you took out, okay.
I didn't take anything out.
I mean --
Yeah, I didn't take anything out.
Okay, so I strongly disagree with the direction that this policy is going in. And I'm going to not want us to report this.
But it's mirroring, hold on, it's mirroring the existing procedure and practice.
Well, I'm disagreeing with that.
I haven't come out.
I think we should allow the public to participate.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Okay, so I do think that if our, if our practice kind of changed where our policy is, I don't see that as a reason to change the policy. I think we should be following the policy and then, and not use what's been going on as a reason to necessarily change the policy. I do agree with you on the, on, I mean, I'd like to see more time, but I understand, go back to five minutes, but I understand what you're saying. I'd like to see that. So it's maybe not solely up to the board president, but up to the board to take, you know, to make a proposal at the beginning of the meeting or somewhere along the meeting if we see things are changing to, of course, the meeting to extend the time.
Okay.
And the other thing is on the, on the subject matter, I think that it's, I think it is a good practice to allow somebody to step up and say, "I would like you guys to consider this or look at this or whatever in the future." And it's not, at least it wasn't difficult in the past for the board president to say, "I appreciate your comments." Of course, it's not something we can discuss right now because it's on the agenda. So there's the things I'd like to say.
Sure. Just one quick note, you mentioned that the practice changed, but the procedure didn't. Actually, the procedure changed in December of 2014.
I didn't see it. Was it December 1? I'm sorry, I talked on it.
It was done in, it was on the procedure itself. It says it was updated in December 2014. And that was based on the policy committee meeting from September 2014.
So then the committee of whole adopted that policy committee meeting?
It was done, no, it was, it was done through policy committee. And because the procedure doesn't need to be approved by the full board, the policy committee gave the administration the authorization to make changes, and it actually outlined the changes we're discussing now.
Yeah, I guess, I was on the, well, I'm on the policy committee, I don't remember that. It seems strange that a committee could change something without it being a board approval.
Yeah, because again, it's the procedures were through administration, and it's specifically said in there, "We don't need to update the policy, just the procedure," because that doesn't require full board approval. Would you like me to forward you those minutes?
Yes, I could probably search them up. But in any case, I appreciate what you're saying.
Okay.
I would just like to be able to see people to make, to be able to make comments on --
Understood.
On whatever, of course, following, following a policy that I believe we have or are adopting of, you know, essentially comments that are respectful and not in a personal attacking type nature on members or staff or anything like that.
Okay. I appreciate your feedback, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so --
So how are we going to address this? Are we coordinated? What are we doing?
I mean, we can do a straw vote to see if people are interested in potentially changing it and see. And we're not voting on the full thing, but last week, we decided to have that conversation later and we decide how the meeting structure will be going forward. So I hear two people interested in having people be able to speak on any item.
Well, I'll speak today.
Once a month. I'm not saying at every meeting, at least once a month if they can change something.
I mean, we had an individual, when the referendum was going on, came up and spoke. He wasn't nice. Did not speak to the referendum, spoke about all different things. And this individual's information was way, way off.
And based on the minutes, that change was recommended by legal counsel, too. And now the new policy that's been vetted by a legal counsel is recommending that we stick to agenda items, too. So it's two different legal opinions saying that we restrict it to agenda items.
Well, then you're probably going to need to address their ability to get something on the agenda then. Because I just think there's a time when the public wants to speak to the board.
And it's in writing.
In its entirety, and this is the only place where they can do that.
I was just going to say, I'm glad you said that, because that's a very fair point. If anybody comes up and says anything, they can start saying whatever they want, say some facts, say this, that, or the other thing. We can't address it whatsoever. And you could have multiple people coming up about the same thing and saying stuff that we know not to be true. We have no way of addressing it.
Absolutely.
I understand that. In fact, when I was on the, you know, the president, or I don't remember, but we had a guy who was on the bandwagon about smoking in our schools, and it absolutely wasn't allowed. But he came to every board meeting and had his little two-minute or three-minute say, whatever it was. I've been there. I've had those people come, and I don't necessarily like those people when they have to, you know, I mean, I don't, I know the frustration that this is not something we can do anything about. I just don't, I just feel pretty strongly that we should allow the public to address the board in an easy way. It shouldn't be so complicated. If they want to come and talk to us and they've had an issue and it, and they're frustrated, we're their go-to people sometimes. We of course want them to use the chain of command. I know I'm big on that. But this is a public body. And when you start limiting the public's ability to address us this much, I think it's, I just think it's, it's going in the wrong direction in a way that could easily fix it if we just took that word off.
So we're not starting to restrict them?
Well, obviously, we've been doing it for a while then, but I don't agree with it.
Okay. I'm just saying, we're not starting anything new.
I might argue that that was unclear because that is not in policy and that rule, I don't want to argue about what happened in the past, but it was, it was unclear.
Was she the president at the time anyway?
I don't recall the rules being changed. I just don't recall that.
Well, you may, you may not. I mean, it was a procedure, we went to committee and it goes on.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I've been on, I've been on the other side. I've been told, "You can't speak, Mr. Burnett." "What do you mean?" I remember clearly. "What do you mean?" And it was --
I'm just trying to keep it in the public.
-- all I was told, that I couldn't speak.
Okay.
And it didn't taste good, I'll tell you that. But it was the rule. And so I had to go around a different way to get what I had to get, what I wanted to get done. So I, I've been there.
So how many are interested in changing it for the time being to allow people to speak on any item?
Once, yeah. This is at a regular meeting. Mine would be.
Okay. And then how many want to keep it to only agenda items for the time being?
Yeah.
For now? Will we discuss it? Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And determine what the meeting structure is, and that'll be part of the larger conversation. So this can be changed down the line.
So a question I have then, what is going to happen for now to committee of whole meetings? What is going to happen if we would approve these policies for the next board meeting? And now we don't, we're only allowing them to speak during, on agenda items and under these rules? So we are not going to have the committee have the whole discussion the way we used to after the next meeting?
What do you mean? How is this changing from what we're currently doing?
Right now, we do, we, we're allowing people to participate in the committee of the whole meetings a little bit more.
Because we're talking about two different things.
Right. But it's related to this.
Correct. But he was just sticking with what we were talking about as far as talking about the agenda.
I know. But what, what happens to public participation on committee of whole meetings? That's my question. Are we not going to do committee of whole meetings? And that is your move point.
It's going to be regular board meetings.
They're all going to be regular, okay. Just clearing that up.
So there'll be a section for them to comment at the beginning, like there is now. So there will still be an avenue for them to speak at the beginning of the meeting that we want to change.
Okay. No questions?
Okay.
Unless you're other line.
So then are we clear with the 167.3 at this point? Okay?
The next one I put on the memo was the fund balance. And I shared with you over the weekend, the specific changes that we talked about. I think Mike created some clarifying language. I think really a couple people had asked him to go back and determine what the magic number would be. I think we talked a lot about fifteen percent, sharing what our current fund balance is, what would it need to be to avoid short-term borrowing? And it was pretty high. So I think the number, Mike had reached out to other districts. I think he shared last time, it sort of split between those that have a number, those that don't. So I think the, what you see there is just a clarification and a statement that says, should the board want to reprioritize? It gives you the, it doesn't really change the essence of what this policy is. And then under the unrestricted fund balance, it gives you categories again, which just align with the goals up above. But the number that's in there is really the conversation that the board still has to decide on. So we brought back a suggested number, but that's really the discussion topic of changing that percentage. We also talked about developing policy guidelines or administrative guidelines to accompany this, but obviously, we couldn't do that until the policy itself is approved.
Any follow-up questions?
Yeah. So how, why are we okay with eighteen as opposed to fifteen if we still haven't get where we want to get, right? Because that number is --
That number is five million. So what that number equates to, right?
Eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent.
And where are we at now?
Six. We'll be around six point six, six point seven.
So you're going to start expanding?
Well, that's, so this says at least eighteen percent.
What eighteen percent doesn't get you to the short-term borrowing? You could say that it gives you some emergency funding, depending upon how big your emergency is, right?
So, so looking at the goals carefully, the short-term is, the way we have it phrased, it's to minimize short-term borrowing, not to necessarily, the way it's written, to avoid. We're trying to minimize it. Not that. So those three goals up there, yeah, there's nothing that says you have to do this. It's minimize, it's maximize bond rating and cover any unforeseen expenditure needs. I mean, short of a tornado coming through, which would then be covered by insurance, but at five million, you know, it's, as a minimum, it's pretty healthy.
Well, I understand in a business world, short-term borrowing is the cost of doing business. And you do want to minimize it. I don't like to pay interest, but at times when a bunch of slackers owe me a lot of money, I got, I got to dip into my reserves and it costs money. It's unfortunate, but I just don't see what three percent, you know.
It splits the difference between what I've seen with districts at fifteen versus twenty, and it's a nice flat number at this point in time, five million.
So I mean, I, if I'm neutral, I don't really, you know, I'm just --
I think Mike added the language in there, the two, that says based on economic conditions. So to your point, Quinn, when borrowing money is cheap, the board may say, "We don't necessarily need that, and fiscally, we can have the fund balanced down." If we start paying ten, twenty percent to borrow money, the board might have a different philosophy that we should avoid it and give money in there. You know what I'm saying? So I think that the phrase that's in there gives the board some leeway to say that, here's our goals, here's a percentage, but understand economic conditions might cause us to prioritize those goals differently on an annual basis.
So 91 averse to changing the number to eighteen percent?
There's a little grammatical error in that first sentence. Did you guys catch that? Any given gime. Any given gime.
You see, any given game.
Any given gime.
It was a whole run.
Thank you.
Is that a word I don't know?
Okay, so we'll get that changed to eighteen. John, did you hear that? So we're going to change, we are going to do the eighteen percent, okay?
So good to meet.
Okay, so any other questions on 6320? Or 9140? So we've gotten through those. For any questions on any others?
I do have a couple more questions.
Okay.
When I look at our policy manual, it was very easy to track our current one. These are the ru, these are the policies, these are the rules that go with the policies. Where, I've had this question, I'm not sure I understand, where are the rules, the guidelines going to be? Are they going to be in, they're not going to be in the policy manual? Are they going to be separate? Are they going to be linked? Where are they going to be?
Good question. So right now, when you look at ours, like, they're like all in a row. So they'll be together. So the thing is, like, if I was going to search under whatever term, it would show up any board policies and guidelines simultaneously that would work out. So if I was looking up graduation requirements, it would show me both policies and guidelines that relate to graduation requirements. So they will be in the same place here, so under policies, under board docs, you would You would be able to just pick either policies or administrative guidelines. So you could pick the whole category of policies, or you could see guidelines. And they are also linked within the policy, so you could get to the corresponding guideline. So it's, it's a directory of policies, a directory of guidelines. You can search and get them all combined together, and you can see the correlation of them.
An interesting struggle we've had is guidelines changing and us not being aware. I'm still, I'm still not clear, when these guidelines change? How is the board made aware of that? And that is not written anywhere in the policy.
Sure it is, it's approved policy as it is in our current one, how guidelines are approved.
How are they approved then?
They're called administrative guidelines, for that purpose.
They're not approved, I don't know, I don't, I'm not asking for us to approve them. Oh my gosh.
Okay, okay, okay.
No. Please don't misinterpret that. I do not want us even have to talk about those at the board meeting. I just wanna know, how are we gonna be made aware? Because in the past, things would be changed and we were not always told. And I don't want that to continue to happen. And I also want, you know, if we're gonna improve a policy manual without any guidelines? That's just a little uncomfortable for me. Because those guidelines aren't ready yet, obviously, right?
Yeah, that's the process, because we had asked, there's a lot of other districts who are in that same journey with us. Waukesha, I think, is the one that's currently in. So, we asked Richard to look at those, and he said, currently, you're not gonna, I mean, those are more your practices that you're doing. And obviously, some of those, as we work with him this fall, will become a higher priority in terms of wanting to go and address those. But for the most part, some of the practices and procedures we're following won't change based on the policy change. Because some of the policies were just cleaning up language or adding some things and won't change it. There will be some, for example, I would say the zero series, the board thing? There are gonna be some things there that are gonna require some administrative changes. But until the board takes up graduation requirements, that guideline isn't gonna change. Do you know what I mean? There are some that aren't going to change. I can tell you what I've done in my last district for changes for administrative guidelines. Typically, when Neola does their, as we said, twice a year, policy updates? Some of them are just a technical change, like a grammatical change, they found a typo. Those don't typically go anywhere because it's just a typo. So that goes out to a board memo, we're fixing this typo. When policies need to be addressed or decisions need to be made, they would go to policy committee first. And in addition to that, always communicate out changes to administrative guidelines. I don't think there was a chance, there wasn't a time in which changes to administrative guidelines were not communicated to the board? In my practice, prior to this district. So, moving forward, should there be changes to administrative guidelines? They would be communicated to the board? In a memo? In terms of, here are the policies that are changing. If those are related to a policy that the policy committee had to look at? It would be talked about at that same time. But again, as you said, the board doesn't approve that.
Correct. So that's why I don't, I just wanted to reconsider. Couldn't we put that in the policy on? It could be in the administrative one. I think there's two policies that sort of address it, mostly it's in the administrative. Thinking, not the first section, but the second section? Where administration is in charge of the guidelines? Needs to notify the board of changes. I mean, what's wrong with putting that in the policy at somewhere where it fits? Notify the board of changes?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because I know, Lisa, you will. I just want to, you know, there's things in the past that were real challenges for us. Just add that.
I think it's a good idea, you know?
Notify the board of changes is what...
You know, it protects both sides.
Which, which is that, Quinn, that protects both sides?
By putting just a sentence in there that administration needs to notify the board of any changes? Then if they do make the change and they go to...
We're just talking about the, any policies related to guidelines, particularly administration guidelines.
So, John, to be clear, it's twelve thirty dot oh one.
Twelve thirty, okay. Just, I think that might have been what I was looking at before, and what I didn't like about something in there was, or at least somewhere in that verbiage? What is it, there it is? Yep, so the superintendent got it, so I don't know. There was something in there that says the superintendent may notify the board? And I thought it should say, maybe will notify the board, or is required to, or shall, or something like that.
So at this point, we'll change it so that it specifies any administrative guideline changes? Will need to be, the board can notify?
Yes, notify. I can understand not having to approve every single thing. And as it says up here in the policy somewhere? That if we feel that something should be approved, then we can move it from guidelines to, you know, to part of policy, right? But, I, I do think that we need to be notified.
Sure, okay. Yep, and I think we're all in agreement here, so we'll get that added on there.
Okay, yeah, fine. If I'm just kinda repeating what was already said, a couple of the voices were a little more faint to hear.
Oh, it's fine. Thanks, John. Okay. Any other?
I have a couple more.
If you can reference the policy number first.
Yeah, thank you. I will. That was, yeah, I think there's a couple of different places, that's why I didn't done that.
No, it's fine, understood.
So, I did ask, did we clear up the summer school thing where it said shall and may?
We did.
Same, same.
We said, left it in.
There was one that I didn't bring up, but I had it on my list. It is two four six four. Maybe I'm being... Maybe I'm, as I reread it now, I'm like, well, maybe this is just fine the way it is. But, had to do with... It's hard to find these ones here. It's hard to find them.
Is it gifted talent that's doing this?
Yeah. I just wanted, I saw it. It's kinda hard when you read them all at once, there's a lot of, I know you all know this.
Said two four six four, correct? That's what I heard. That's what I heard too. It's like G and T.
Which one is it? Two four six four, yeah. Expansion? I just thought, expansion of academic attainments and intellectual skills. I guess that might be, okay, I liked the word advancement instead of expansion. In other words, spells out a little clearer that our gifted and talented kids don't need more of the same? But they need experiences that allow them to advance in their learning versus just expand their learning. And, that was one of my, my only suggestion in this policy? Was changing that word from expansion to advancement of academic attainments and intellectual skills. Because I have heard it said that in our gifted and talented programs, sometimes they are... I'm not saying Whitton all is, but sometimes they tend to just give you more work rather than advance your education. That's why I thought that word was more, was stronger advancement. But maybe expansion means the same thing, but I thought advancement was a better...
Okay.
Would the board be willing to consider that?
I'm comfortable with expansion, because I think it talks about expanding the opportunities available to them in the programs. So I don't see us doing less strenuous opportunities. Is anybody, is anybody concerned with it? Okay. Mike, what's next?
I would again like to make a case for striking that language that says children are illegal. That are illegal aliens. You do not have to repeat verbatim what that law says. We could, we can still, that still says we're following the law, not trying to skirt the law here? But, policy number five one 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 would be very easy to just change that very fast.
We have to keep it to, to align with the...
The exact response from, the exact response we got was, this was a ruling from the Supreme Court that this is what this is.
That's what the law is, but that does not say that our school board policies have...
Why would they not align with the law?
We can't go against what the law says.
I'm not trying to go against...
Five one one one.
Okay, thank you.
And let me look at what his response was again. I did not...
Otherwise, that we're going out of our way to do that, I don't think is right either.
We're approving policies, and that language is offensive to our children.
To be offensive and to be aligned with what the law says. It's what the law states. That's what we're keeping in line with.
We are, I'm not suggesting that...
We go against the law, but you're exactly what you're saying.
Is to, is, is recommendation? That the legal requirements, the correct legal terminology? We can say, without calling...
We're not calling them that.
Without calling them aliens, we can still follow... My point is, we can still be following the law? And get rid of the words illegal alien? And call them children in this country illegal?
Legally in this country, no, I mean...
I'm not trying to skirt the law, but I don't believe we wanna call our children aliens. I don't agree with both federal law either.
I wanna refer to whether or not you agree with the federal law or not, it is what it is. If you, if you have every right to take it up and sue the government to change it, but I'm going with what we have currently.
I can make a case for our own policies too? That I do not wanna see that language in our policies.
We're not calling them that. We're not calling them that. We're reasonable, go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, it just seems strange to me how, for some reason, the media and policy general are more than willing to redefine? Words, the definition of words, language such as sequester and gay. These days, when you hear those, you don't think about what I learned that word sequester was as I was growing up in the scientific field? And gay no longer seems to be happy? But yet, for some reason, do people, aliens, still mean something negative? And in fact, it's been, it's had multiple meanings for decades. So, I have, you know, reason to change it, especially since that's the legal language? That's been, as Kevin pointed out, all through the Supreme Court. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not cruel or demeaning or anything else unless you choose to be sensitive to that for some reason. I mean, why can't that have multiple definitions?
Well, I, I personally think it is cruel term. It's a legal term. It's a cold term, you know? And, our legal said there's no room to move?
The exact response was the correct legal term according to the US Supreme Court is illegal alien.
He doesn't say though, what's interesting is, you know, I look at, will they defend it or won't they? He doesn't say on this case, if we change it, he won't defend it. Because I think my recommendation isn't changing the intent? Which is why they can still defend it if they change it.
There's still, he wrote, my recommendation is that this policy pertaining to the legal requirements of parolee? In public school, utilize the correct legal terminology as specified by the Supreme Court? In its decision on immigration laws, since the legal standard.
Yeah, I, I mean, he very clearly gives a definition that it's not their choice, it's based on the Supreme Court verbiage.
I'm sorry, I cannot find that language at the moment. Is it in five one one? Why am I not finding it?
You put it in your...
No, I've got that, but where is it in here? Yeah. Why am I not finding it at the moment?
The actual policy or what?
Yeah, the actual policy in here.
It's under the mark, policies mark?
Yeah, I know, but I don't, I, am I...
Actually, if you wanna just put in the search box, illegal aliens, and it will come up.
Okay, thank you.
That's usually what I do these days, is I just search it.
And that's why we changed it.
And that's why we changed it. Just saying.
For changing.
Changing, yep. And then it's item B.
So, if you look in a, in a Google search, we have that capability? Through a dictionary, request for the definition of the term alien? The first thing that comes up is belonging to a foreign country or nation. I think that's, that's extremely common use of that term? And, and I think it would be an issue, except for when we put the term illegal alien? Now that's where everybody seems to get sensitive. Because it's for decades that meant, somebody not from this country.
Yep, thank you, John.
Hold on one second, I just, it's not item B, which one is it?
It is, it is item B.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thought it was at the end of this. Okay, shall provide a free education to those students who are considered by federal to be illegal aliens. I mean, there is, I just don't see any reason we can't, we don't have to say? That, that students who are considered by federal to be in this country illegally are considered? Or considered homeless? I would just really like to see this changed though.
So, while I don't find that particular phrase to be all that welcoming either? I am perfectly happy accepting that it's a legal standard, and that's what the law uses. I'm fine with having it stand. My, I guess my question is more a point of order. I thought we had already addressed this question in the prior meeting, and even took a straw poll to let it stand? So I just assumed the discussion on this one was finished.
You could, but I might want to feel pretty strongly about this. We've all had time to think about it, and that's why we have multiple meetings.
Sure.
Ninety percent of what we have discussed, I am not bringing back up. But there are a few that are very important, and this is one.
Okay. So, I think we're sticking with maintaining the legal terminology.
Probably bring it up at public meeting as well, so you can be prepared for that. Thank you. Okay.
We're not gonna have, yeah, we're not gonna have discussion next time. We're gonna have a vote.
We do get to have discussion when we are voting on something, I'm sorry. But we get to comment on what we're voting on. So you cannot tell me that I cannot comment on these policies when we're voting on the manual.
I'll tell ya, I'll call the question, if that becomes the case.
Why would you do that?
Because we bet, if you're going off about illegal alien in the next meeting? And we're talking about it again, I'm gonna call it, 'cause I'm tired of talking about it.
You wanna shut me down, is that why?
Oh, we've talked about it twice.
We've talked about it twice, we've had it, clear, clear rules on it, and...
You're trying to shut me down at the board meeting?
I'll be like, no, I have every right to do that.
And I'm saying, why? Why can't I express my views?
You can express whatever you want, but we're dealing with Robert's Rules of Orders, and etc., etc. in here? I'm tired of talking about the same thing. We're wasting everybody else's time doing this.
It's not a waste of time.
It is when we've already made the decision that we wanna move forward.
These are our board policies, we have every right, I have every right.
You're talking about one word in a policy.
It's important though.
And we've wasted this much time, we already discussed it, we discussed it again? And you're telling me we're gonna discuss it a third time? When we've already all made up our minds, except you, who doesn't wanna accept the US Supreme Court's ruling?
I can say that it won't be a discussion if you'd like to make the comment? But nothing will be changed at that point, because we'll approve the first reading.
You know? Board deliberation is important, John.
That's what we're doing.
And to say that nothing, that's not true. There are seven of us on this board, and you never know what could change between now and that board meeting? As to whether or not everyone's gonna accept every word in this policy? It could change. That's why we deliberate. I get a chance to, again, say, we've thought about this, I know, this is really important? Because these are our board policies. So, I disagree with that. I think, unless you wanna shut down public deliberation, which you can do by tabling the question? Go ahead. I would be very disappointed that you did that.
Luen, you're making accusations like that. We discussed it last week, even though, leading up to that? There were two policy committee meetings where these could have been discussed? We went in depth last week and discussed it. We added a special board meeting tonight to discuss it again. That's four opportunities. To say that we're limiting or dissuading people from having discussion as a board? That's not an accurate statement.
I didn't say?
You just did.
All those meetings, I'm saying at this meeting coming...
So, Luen, last week?
It's not fair to limit.
Stop, I'm talking now. Last week was a full board meeting. We had the discussion. Instead of having a policy meeting tonight? We had another full board meeting to discuss it.
You've already said all that.
I understand, but I don't know what you're not understanding about that. You've had opportunities. So to say we're shutting down the ability to have discussion is not fair? Because you're accusing me of shutting it down? And I'm not. We're giving more opportunities than we originally said we would to discuss it, which is tonight.
It's gonna be on our agenda?
To approve.
At the next board meeting? If the purpose of it going on the agenda? Is to approve it, we get to discuss it before we approve it? You can't shut that down? Unless you call a question, which would be inappropriate?
Well within my range.
Based on the work, but it would not be a good...
It'd be inappropriate what you're doing?
Can I finish?
I'd like to talk, because you've been talking for a while. It'd be inappropriate what you're doing is telling everybody else that's spent all their time reviewing these policies? For the past month?
Can you just get over that?
Went to the policy meeting, committee meeting twice? Last week's meeting? That their time is not as valuable as yours? Because now you wanna discuss these things, or you wanted to discuss it last week? You didn't wanna do it then, now you're telling us that? Although we discussed it last week, that didn't really count? I'm gonna discuss it again, even though we bettered this up?
I'm hoping that we're deliberating? And that we're listening to each other, Kevin, that's all I'm hoping.
We are.
And that there are some more discussions that are going on.
I listened to you on this one, I listened to everybody who talked about this one already.
Can we move on then? Because I'm done on that policy. I do, what we're talking about now is what's gonna happen at the next board meeting? And I do not want to feel like my, like I've been at the next board meeting? You can go back and say all that stuff in the past? But I still have a right at the next board meeting, as an individual member? To, to pull out or talk about certain policies that I disagree with? I don't understand? Why you wanna shut that? And maybe that's not the right, why you don't want me to express my views?
Because at this point?
When it comes to that final vote?
You would just be making a statement to have it recorded.
Then I, and I, I'm gonna keep trying, because there's just a couple things that are important to me. The rest of it, I think I'm gonna be on board with. I think these policies have been really good. I like how the direction they're going.
Can we just go to the next one, please?
So, I haven't had a chance to say that. They're really good, don't get me wrong.
But everything you said last week and this week goes against that? So can we just get on to the next policy?
Or everywhere else outside of the meeting as well?
Yes. Can we just get on to the next policy, please?
Okay, the next one I wanted to look at was seventy-five ten? And I'm sorry, but I thought you were gonna look at those recreational activities and add a few more in there? And it didn't end up getting marked up at all?
It is listed on here, that she's going to follow up with Neola to determine that. So it is in here that she's working on.
Okay, but not by the next meeting then? Are we, it's not in the marked up policies, if I remember right?
It's not, I did not hear back from him, so that would appear on my part in terms of getting specific on that.
And then, I... And then, I apologize, I didn't get to these, I must have been missing the last page. So, these I did not bring up last time. So, they're new. Sorry. 9000, I did not think that board members should have to let the superintendent know every time they're entering a building. I believe that's new. That's the way it's always been? I mean, I would always, I'm very shameful of principals' time and superintendent's time. I just didn't realize that you, it would have to be two phone calls before you go into a building. You want us to have to let the superintendent know. It's 9150. Just wanna double check that because I think that's, I don't think that's necessary. But I do think we, everything else here is great about proper protocol for entering buildings.
And you're saying in the capacity as a board member?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think our communication, from what I understand from the other policy that's on here, is supposed to be vetted through the superintendent?
Correct.
And this would just fall in line with that. Because you're obviously, if you're communicating to the principal that you're intending to come in or whoever it is, that communication technically should be going through the superintendent or the other policy.
Correct.
No, the other policy didn't. I mean, we've never, as a practice, done that.
Yes.
That's how we want it? You want us to have to call the superintendent when we're going in buildings?
Didn't we have a meeting earlier this year with our legal counsel where this was discussed?
That was about not even...
Yes, it was.
That was about the fobs. I'm not...
No, it was more than that, I was accessing it, and that, and there were emails that followed up with that, that any communication with administration...
Listen, don't belabor this. You guys, I'm not here to argue every one of these things. You do not want to just say yes or no and let's go. I do not want to argue...
But then we would be shutting you down, Luen, and we're trying to discuss it with you. So, when we discuss it, you say you don't want to belabor it. When we don't discuss it, you say we're shutting you down.
I'm getting impatient myself. You don't need to discuss it. If you guys are comfortable with it, I'm fine with that.
You don't, you may understand you. You don't think we should notify the superintendent if we are coming in as a school board member?
No, I just don't think the need to...
What should we do?
Like, I'm, you have to let the principals know ahead of time and believe that's what it said in that policy. And I think that's great. I think you should call ahead of time and I think we should make, you know, be respectful. But I just didn't see the need to make two phone calls if I'm gonna go, if you're, a lot of times more as board president, you get invited into these buildings, so you have to let the superintendent know every time you're going in. And I did a lot of the dare graduation stuff.
I do.
Okay, so that is, you do let her know every time you're going in? Okay?
Typically, it's done via email, and you can just, it's typically done via email, especially those invitations. You can just reply and copy.
Absolutely. Okay, I just had a question about whether we wanted to keep that going. Okay. I still have a question about the ADA studies, but the, I just want us to be aware, when we approve 9160, that it's very strong in there that our facilities need to be accessible to all and public participation, I think that's part of her, I can't remember. But it says that we have to be accessible and we are not. I just, I don't, as I read back the policy, I don't want to rec, I mean, I'm not gonna, there's some unclear things in there, but Neil is gonna look into it in the future in terms of these dates that they put in there. And the need to make our facilities accessible, as far as I understand it, there is no, and if you look at the paragraph prior to that, it says that you cannot discriminate against a person with this disability. So, some of our facilities, and we're all aware of that, so I don't want to belabor that here, but when you approve this policy, it just becomes even more critical that we make sure that we fix those buildings so that we are not discriminating against parents or the public. And there's, we're heading in the right direction, but I just wanted to bring that up. I'm willing to support the policy as it is, knowing that we're, they're gonna be reviewing that and updating that. And then the last question I had, does 2011 cover the block party? That's always been an issue for us, so that was my last question that I didn't get.
And, and did you see that explanation from Dr. Wilson?
No. What email, was there another email?
There absolutely was.
When did that come?
It's actually in the meet folder for today's meeting.
I'm sorry, I did not see that. Okay, so she addressed it in there, I'll read it, read up on it.
If you look in today's meeting folder, it's there. She did send an update after last week's meeting.
I got that.
With notes based on...
Yeah.
It sits on there under 9211.
It said Brad.
Oh, well, this is, were there two?
You're looking at the email. It's actually, it's attached to that email that you had printed.
I may not have printed that. Okay.
That responses from every item that was on there and what the status was for the principal.
I got it. Oh. So, it's under here, but there's another letter along with the email?
Yeah, there was a 10-page document that was attached that had a response that I put in for every single item that happened after the 14th, in terms of we discussed it or didn't discuss it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others?
No.
Okay. Any other comments related to policies? John, do you have any comments?
I am doing some quick research on a, a, I just want to make sure that, believe me, I don't, I don't see how it's practical to read over 30,000 applied of policy to make it an actual reading, but I just want to make sure that doing some, just presenting to the public and to us and then adopting this stuff is legitimate based on policy, I think 151 and procedure 151R, just to make sure that, and what I saw is probably insufficient, but it's just a little surprising to do these mass things considering that usually when we change a policy, you know, Quinn reads it out loud, I think that's been a practice of two, the board president, the committee president, chair, I mean, chair, reads it out loud and then this may or may not be discussion, the second meeting reads it out loud, may or may not be discussion, and then it's voted on. Just doing these in mass kind of makes me concerned.
Hey, John, it's Kevin. Yeah, I asked this exact question because I was like, do I have to read this entire thing in the meeting? And I think Lisa looked it up and you don't have to actually read it, and I think it was one of the emails, one of the things you sent out did say reading slash something, because that was exactly my concern in one of the policy meetings, is reading everything out loud, and I don't remember the exact...
Yeah, WASB has actually a really great, and I'll send it out, so I contacted both WASB and Neola and our legal counsel to make sure like what was meant by that. And WASB did a great publication of eight pages last April 2016 that the misnomer of the word reading and the interpretation of first reading, second reading, and the law itself does not require first reading, second reading. Local school districts, some of their board policies do that, and they said the reality is that majority of school districts usually will waive the first reading just because there's usually some sense of urgency of getting a policy passed. But they were just, they clarified what it meant to read it and they said it's not literally reading it. But John, to your point, because this is a unique situation, we did, both Kathy and I followed up with both WASB and Neola to make sure the protocol of doing it, and that's why the, you know, we had a discussion meeting which happened last week, which was a full board meeting that allowed for that, by having this meeting as the first reading and taking action on it, and then next week meets our local board policy because we wanted to make sure that it met both our current policy, the new one, and the state statutes. Because, again, it's a unique situation and you're right that we typically don't mass approve a whole policy manual.
So, it's, no, it kicks in, that one, in my mind legally, that one's kind of relevant because we're voting on the new stuff based on the old stuff, and according to 151, it seems as though we're legitimate to do it. I just wanted to make what I found. It says, and you probably already saw it, but it says, under board operating policy, it says, which, oh yeah, it's right above that, that proposed policies amendments therefore shall be adopted only upon a majority vote of all members of the school board. They should be presented to school board members in writing as a first reading at one school board meeting and as a second reading at a second school board meeting. So, presenting them to us in writing, I guess, is effectively considered a reading according to our policy 151. So, just to throw that out there.
Thank you, John.
Doesn't mean I'm not comfortable with approving policies in mass like this, but I guess I answered my own research as far as here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan, I'd do it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I would like the ability to pull out one or two policies if that, and at this point, I'm not even thinking I'll need to do two, to really vote against those. And then allow me to vote on the whole policy manual, because I do think that the work you guys have done, I appreciate that, and it's unfortunate, but I had to read all mine later and it took a little more board time, but it's such a big job, and I just didn't have the time to read all those policies all summer. It just wasn't, didn't fit with what was going on in my life. So, here we come, and I want to thank you for giving me that time. And really, I just, that's what board deliberation is about. So, I really didn't get a chance to express that, you know, in reading every policy, I really thought they were good and that we've got a lot of positive changes coming here, it's gonna be more consistent, it's gonna be easier. There's a lot of positive things here, so I didn't get to stress that. I want to express that now and I will at the next board meeting as well. So, if you don't allow me to pull one or two out, if I even need to, I'll think about it, whether I want to, I will think about that. But if I don't even get that opportunity, then I feel like I'm getting put in a corner where I might have a few things I disagree with in these policies and I can vote against that one or two policies. So, could you allow that as opposed to an up or down vote on the whole policy?
Yeah, up to this point, we had planned on voting as a whole on it. I don't know that I'm comfortable or see the need to pull individual policies out and hold separate votes, but...
Well, is it consent agenda item?
So, tonight you take a vote on it for first read and suggested protocol is because there would be a vote already on the first reading, but if the majority passes, that it would just appear on consent agenda next, that's what the record, it appears on consent agenda for the 28th.
So, she has every right...
Voting twice.
Every right to vote.
We're gonna be voting in the next few minutes, John.
Okay, I don't remember doing that to pass after a meeting, after first reading, is that right?
Yeah, you have to vote, that's what it is. You have to vote on the first reading and then you vote on the second reading. That's how procedure is. That's why there was discussion last Monday, and that's typically before action. So, tonight is the first reading action and next week is second reading action. That's to the letter of the law. You could have always waived the first reading and just had one, but that's really, yeah, your choice.
So, I don't think it's any different than any other consent agenda item. She has a right to vote and ask to make her statement or ask a question.
I mean, next week, you're talking about, okay.
To make your statement, yes, but...
We don't have to engage, but she has a right to vote.
But her question is, can she remove specific policies from the overall and ask that we vote on those individual policies?
Well, I think you need to, I don't know who you'd ask.
Well, is that something we want to pursue, though?
Well, I mean, well, I don't, we may make a statement saying, no, we don't want to pursue that, but we might not know what, if they are within Robert's Rules of Order. We follow law of good order and they say that this happened, this can happen, then we need to follow it. So, I don't know what the protocol is. Maybe we need to find out.
That has to happen tonight is the deal, though.
What happens?
The vote is happening tonight. So, if she's gonna vote on the policy manual, pull it, that's gonna happen in the next couple of minutes.
Right, but at the next...
So, my question is, I don't, if you vote yes on everything and don't pull anything, I don't think you can undo the yes vote, like, I don't know that, do you see what I'm saying? If you, let's say you just had a unanimous yes vote tonight on the first reading, I think it has to be a duplicate vote. I don't know that, I'm gonna be honest with you.
But why, why is it different? And we bring things to the board twice and on a consent agenda, we've pulled it in the past.
Right.
So, why is it different?
Because when I'm voting twice, is that, the time you're voting on the consent agenda is the very first time you're voting on it. This is unique in that there's actual two votes on the same topic.
So, she can still pull it and comment on it, which is what she asked to do. Go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, Quinn, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, we've had the first reading and taken no action on any kind of vote, and then the next meeting, we have a second reading and then we vote. Isn't that correct? Because there's something in our board policy that says we vote twice. There's two readings which are basically presenting in writing.
No, reading is a vote, and if you've been doing it that way, I'm sorry to break the news to you.
Well, you can waive.
John's right, though, in saying that. I don't think we've ever taken a two-vote thing on, at least in the past couple of years I've been on here, so I see where he's going, I see what he's saying, because...
I can't remember, we don't vote on it.
We've never voted after the first reading.
Then really, all you're doing is having a discussion meeting and then a reading, which is not what the, that's not what your board policy says. I'm just... A reading by state statute means you take vote on a reading. You can waive that first reading.
Well, why don't we do that for tonight? Because I wasn't prepared to vote tonight.
Yeah, I think we need, if you know the law and you know...
Well, that part of it, if you're gonna, I've been in boards that typically practice always waiving the first reading because they've discussed it at one meeting, and then otherwise it's gotta carry forward to two, and most boards say, we don't have, do you see what I'm saying? So, because you have already discussed it, but I was following the letter of your policy which says we have a first and a second reading, and because this is such a big deal, we didn't want to waive the first reading, I thought we wanted to actually follow the letter of the law. If you have a first reading, you're supposed to vote on it. The idea to have a discussion meeting is this local board's decision. Not all boards have a separate meeting to discuss it without taking action. A lot of board meetings, the very first time they hear a proposal, take action that same night. This board wants that on a meeting to just discuss, which you did last Monday. So, you could not, you could table the decision to vote knowing that next week then you're gonna waive the first reading to take it, and then it would put you in that place to allow what you discuss for. Then I would not put it under consent agenda, I would put it under a proposal to vote on.
And then when we do vote, then if it's done, are we gonna have to do another?
No, if you waive the first reading, then it would be done. And then we would get an answer to the question.
We vote to waive the first reading.
Correct. You have to first vote, someone has to make a motion to vote to waive the first reading, then you can, then you'd have a motion and then you'd have a discussion.
So, then in the first vote, the issue of whether I will be allowed to pull one or two policies out isn't gonna be relevant in the first vote?
Well, I'll try to get an answer before that to help us understand how this has to happen. I mean, I'm sitting here with like partial information right now, I'm trying to speculate what that would happen. I don't, I think the question that we're asking is, how do we pull a couple and, that's That's the question.
That we might want to vote, yeah, that there's two that I...
Right, because if there will only be one vote, it doesn't get tricky. If it get, if there was gonna be two votes in which you would pull tonight, but then not pull next time, that was where the trickiness...
Right, so if we...
If there's only one vote next time, other than the vote to waive, then it really is less tricky.
Right. But I would like to know if you guys are willing to allow that and then she can follow up to find out what the rules are. But if you're willing to do that, then that's easy.
Yeah, you know, Glenn, we've had plenty. Now that I care of this process, we have, we had plenty.
It doesn't change the fact that it's an entire vote on the entire policy manual in one vote. And to not allow us to disagree...
We have had it, we've had twice.
You've disagreed, you stated that, so you can choose to vote against it.
I know, but I can't vote against the whole policy manual. Why should I have to vote against the whole policy manual? Because there's only two that I disagree with.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, you have to make a decision either way. You have to make a...
Why should I answer my question? Answer my question.
Yes, maybe we should...
Why should I have to vote? Just answer that question before you give me any argument.
You're making a choice.
Why can I not, why can I not be allowed to pull two policies and vote against them instead of having to vote against the whole policy manual?
It's one item on our agenda.
And that's the choice you're making, if you'd like to pull, if you'd like to vote against...
You could structure this so that I could vote against a few individual, you could have brought it forward section by section.
We'd have to vote on every single...
You chose not to.
But even if you brought it section by section, you'd be pulling individual policies out of individual sections.
Right, of a section, which is the point.
But that still isn't accomplishing.
The point is, we are approving an entire policy manual here. I shouldn't have to vote against the whole thing in public, because I disagree with two policies.
In order to do exactly what you, in order to do exactly what you want to do, we'd have to vote on every single policy individually.
No, you would not.
No, no, that's true, because what if there are two policies together and I just want to vote on yes on one and no on the other? I can't do that in what you're saying. Even if we did each series and you disagree with one of the policies, we'd have to do it exactly like that for you to pull every policy out, regardless of all of them together or each series at a time.
I'm asking for two. I'm not asking that we have to walk through every single policy in there.